Yeah, so we leave the, and we'll be back on the 5th of February.
Okay, and you can make the meeting that night, you think?
Yeah, yeah. Cause we get back every morning.
I was looking, I thought, I was looking at the end of February.
I have to change my password, did you get it?
Yeah, no, Jen.
Yes, I changed my password.
I'm good.
How do you change it?
Cause it's five.
So, I got in here, I was pressing the cancel instead of the go button, cause that's where my other computer, where it is. But then, um, it flashed up, it said, would you like to change your password now, cause it expires in 10 days. It's never done before.
The January 2nd of Eden Prairie, meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each council meeting, we have an opportunity for residents to address us on issues not on the agenda. This portion of the meeting is not recorded or televised, and if you're interested in addressing the council at that time, please contact the city manager's office at 949-8412 by noon of the meeting date, with your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. If time permits after scheduled speakers, then we allow time for unscheduled speakers to address the council at that point in time. If you have any questions about this, please contact the city manager's office. The first item tonight is a presentation on the Prop Food Shelf Collection, Mr. Getchell.
Uh, Mayor, that would be the first item of the regular council meeting, but we need to hold the HRA meeting first. So I don't know, that might be in the annotate.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda.
On the thing, but it'd be on the, yeah.
Alright, you're right. Okay, we'll call the HRA meeting to order. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the HRA meeting held on December 12, 2017?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Then, we are being asked to adopt a resolution approving the decertification of Tax Increment Financing District Number 13 of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, Mr. Getchell.
Uh, thank you, members of the HRA, that is correct. The action tonight is to decertify a tax increment financing district that was first established in 1996 as part of the major redevelopment of the Eden Prairie Center, or the Eden Prairie Mall. So this has been one of the biggest, most successful redevelopment projects that our city has been a part of, and now, just a little over 20 years later, the obligations have been met for the, that particular tax increment district. So our action would be that the city council would decertify that district, and then, the full tax base of that project would then go back on to the Eden Prairie tax rolls. And staff can certainly answer any questions that you may have. But once again, this is related to the TIF district decertification at the Eden Prairie Center.
Thank you. Very successful use of TIF financing for this. When we decided to do this, and the mall wanted to remodel, it was at a point where there were probably about 10 stores in the mall, and traffic lot, the parking lots were empty, and look at it now, it's a thriving retail environment. So it was a very good use of tax dollars. Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution approving decertification of Tax Increment Financing District Number 13 of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn the HRA meeting, you can have it if you want it, but.
You go, second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the meeting is adjourned, now we go back into the council meeting and hit the item Prop Food Shelf Collection.
Uh, yes Mayor, thank you for your patience. We have tonight with us representatives of our Eden Prairie Liquor Operation and Prop, who are here to, we are here to present a check to Prop based on a fundraising partnership we had over the holiday season. So I believe our liquor operations manager, Jaime Urbina, will be providing a brief overview of the project, and then, we have a check that we'd like to present to Prop. Mayor, if you could help with that?
Sure.
And that's our item for tonight.
Alright, um, as Rick said, my name is Jaime Urbina, and throughout the month of November, the city's municipal liquor stores partnered with Prop Food Shelf, and invited customers to donate to the, to the food shelf. So with the goal of raising $5,000 for Prop's food shelf, Eden Prairie Liquor Stores held a dollar drive, inviting customers to contribute just $1 each time they visited. So in addition, we also hosted a Happy Hour for Hunger event, aimed at collecting donations to help fill the food shelves in the holiday season. We would like to thank Eden Prairie Liquor patrons for their generosity, and together, these efforts actually raised a total of $6,169 and 220 pounds of food for the Prop Food Shelf.
Janet, um, we have tonight Janet Palmer, the executive director of Prop, and a couple of other Prop employees or volunteers. I'm sorry, are you per liquor, I'm sorry, here to present the check.
Thank you, I just wanted to quickly, and we have a long agenda, but thank the city, and especially the liquor stores, for one, just doing this event, it was fabulous, and the liquor stores did a great job marketing this and promoting it. And to be honest, I'm in awe that the community is this generous, and you've got the results that you did get. It might be a sign of what people like to drink in Eden Prairie, I don't know, but it's all good. And I just want to say too, that I don't take the relationship with the city lightly. Prop is very happy and proud with all the things that we do with the city in many different ways. It's, it's a great relationship, so, thank you very much. Thank you for what you do.
And thank you to our liquor store staff too, I assume this idea came from all of you, cause I had never heard that this was gonna happen until the event started, so thank you for coming up with this great idea. Is there a motion to approve the agenda and other items of business?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to add?
Uh, yes, Your Honor, just one, I'd like to briefly discuss the airport issue that's been in the newspaper
Okay.
last week.
Okay. All in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, the motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes for the city council workshop held on Tuesday, December 12?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to correct there? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes held, or taken from the city council meeting, held that same date?
So moved.
Second.
Any items to correct there? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Consent calendar, is there a motion on items A through R?
Move approval.
Second.
Are there any items to pull for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Our first public hearing tonight is Nine Mile Creek Watershed District, Mr. Getchell.
Uh, thank you Mayor, and members of the council. Our public hearing tonight is a request by the council to consider an amendment to the Declaration of Covenants, Conditions, and Restrictions for the offices of Nine Mile Creek Watershed District to allow for the addition of two full-time employees and four additional evening meetings at their location. So as, as you know, the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District offices have been located on Gerard Drive in Eden Prairie since 2011. The property, this property is located in a single-family residential neighborhood. When the property was converted from a single-family home to offices at that time, the, as part of the other approvals, rezonings, or any other items necessary, there was a declaration of covenants and conditions that was recorded as part of the development agreement at that time. And that document limited the use of the property, which included the number of employees that could work there and the number of meetings that could be held. So, thus the request before you tonight is to consider an amendment to that agreement. So that's where I mentioned, in additional, two employees, that would be going from three to five employees, and an additional four meetings in a year, and that's asking to go from 16 meetings to 20 meetings. This item actually does not require, it requires council action, but it does not require a public hearing. But we decided to hold a public hearing, a notice for a public hearing, even if that wasn't necessarily, necessary, I think due to the public hearings that were held originally, when the watershed offices relocated to Gerard Drive, to that property. So I see that Randy Anhorn, the director of the watershed district, would like to provide a presentation as the applicant, and then, you could hold a public hearing, and then the applicant or city staff could answer any questions you or the public may have.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Are you gonna need the camera? Do you have any visuals that you wanted to show?
Well, I do have a PowerPoint, and does that just start it here?
Okay, that, yep, so you can do that from there, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor and city council members. My name is Randy Anhorn, I'm the administrator for Nine Mile Creek Watershed District, and I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to do a short presentation. City manager Getchell stole some of my thunder and some of the points, but anyway, to present our request to amend our development agreement, so I appreciate that very much. Alright, first little bit of background, now I have been with the, with the district for a little over a year, so I wasn't part of this all the way back, so some of this is, you may all remember it, and some in the audience may remember it, but it helps me out quite a bit. We were first approached by Barbara Cower, the original owner of the property back in 2009. She had interest in donating the property to the watershed district. The donation would have been contingent on stipulations or receiving approval from the city, and maintaining provisions of a conservation easement on the parcel. So Minnesota Land Trust holds a conservation easement on the parcel. Minnesota Land Trust is a private nonprofit that monitors and forces and can take legal action on conservation easements. So they oversee it, as, so we agreed to the donation agreement, and then started working with the city between 2010 and 2011, on what city manager Getchell had mentioned, the development agreement, the covenants, restrictions, and whatnot. So through that process, at the end, we, after we had the development agreement, we closed on the donation with the Cower property back in February 2011, started some small renovations. We added a meeting area, a basement down below, we kept most of the original house intact, and then moved in in the fall of 2014. May all, I'm not sure if everybody's familiar with the parcel. We're located by Cardinal Creek Wetland, in the south, are the northwest quadrant of 494 and Valley View Road. We're a 5.3 acre parcel, building setback off of Gerard is 350 feet. And again, limited use and development on the parcel through a conservation easement held by Minnesota Land Trust. As part of that, any vegetation management that we go through on the property, or do anything on the property, we have to contact Minnesota Land Trust, they monitor us annually, and we get approval from them to go forward. And per Barbara's wishes, we remain open to the public. We have people, neighbors, we have other people outside of the neighborhood come and use our parcel, walking, sledding, nature watching, birding. She wanted her property to be an amenity to the neighborhood, that's what we strive to do as much as we can, and that's what we continually strive to do. Little bit about the office, so we're 4,800 square feet. Again, majority of the, the original home is intact, our offices, my offices in the master bedroom, we have a couple other offices inside. The addition is mainly meeting space, as I mentioned, and a basement underneath for storage. We currently have three full-time employees, normal working hours are 7:30 to 4:30. We have monthly board meetings that have about 10 to 15 people that show up for those, and they're held third Wednesday of every month, 7 to 9. We have occasional citizen advisory committee meetings between 6 and 8 in the evening, occasional daytime tack meetings, technical advisory committees, especially when we get in the process, which we just finished, going through a watershed management plan revision, our 10-year plan similar to the city as a 10-year comp plan. And one other one that's not on here is we have occasional neighborhood advisory committee meetings as well. To that point, we actually have three of our neighbors sit on our citizens advisory committee. Many of our neighbors continue their connection with Barbara by coming into our property, volunteering. We've had plantings, they help with the plantings, our buckthorn removal, also programs off-site, where we have like a storm drain stenchling project, we'll do an AIS project in a park, or we'll do a stream cleanup. So we do have a strong connection with quite a few of our neighbors. In fact, on, this year, we hosted the United Night Out, in 2017, we had 32 neighbors show up. In fact, council member Aho and, and city manager Getchell also showed up, as well as some other city staff. And again, we're a public open space, we want to stay open to the public for sledding, nature watching, and whatever else. So, background, as, as city manager Getchell had mentioned, you know, we're looking at the, our covenants, our restrictions, we're restricted to three full-time employees, 16 CAC evening meetings per year, 16 board and manager evening meetings per year, two staff meetings of 10 or more people per month, which is basically usually a tack meeting. So we'll have state agency folk, county folk, municipalities, and others that come and provide technical support and input to some of the things we're doing, projects, plans, rules, whatever. And then again, eight neighborhood advisory committee meetings. So our current request, mentioned earlier, is just to increase the limit of our staff potential from three to five. It doesn't mean that we're gonna hire five today. We'd like to increase that limit. Same thing for board and manager meetings, increase the limit, board meetings in the evening from 16 to 20. The reasoning behind that is due to our current and anticipated workloads, again, coming from our just recently approved, state-approved, and board-adopted fifth-generation management plan, where we say, here's what we want to do for the next 10 years, here's how we're gonna do it, programs and projects, capital projects. The board wants flexibility to add staff to actually implement these things, meet these goals, meet these objectives in this plan. Some of the things that we're looking at in different needs is, we are in the process, we have a big project going on right now, Nine Mile Creek, that runs through, we dine a three and a half miles, stream bank restoration project, that we are right in the middle of, so we're busy doing that. We have project, we just finished an analysis on Normandale Lake in Bloomington. We have specific projects that we'd like to implement, we need project management help in certain areas. Again, a staff of three doing a lot of our things gets pretty stretched. Our cost share program, our cost share grant program, where we give cost shares to municipalities and residents, has been truly successful, and we have quite a few people calling in asking about it. We have a lot of projects that have been implemented, so we would like to have somebody help out in the upfront, provide technical support to people that are trying to find out about a cross share, would this work here in our yard, what would you suggest here? Not only that, but again, we do have BMPs in the ground. Sadly enough, we probably have not done a good enough job on following up on them. What shape are they in, do they need to be maintained, you know, and all these things. We need somebody out there inspecting some of the BMPs that we've already subsidized. External grants, good thing, we've been very successful recently in getting grants from the Clean Water Fund, from Board of Water Soil Resources, from PCA. However, that takes time, you get grants, it reduces local tax burden on projects and programs, however, it does take time internally to do this, to follow it up and meet all the reporting needs and other things, and then also going out and looking for more and writing more grant proposals. Site inspections, current projects that are going on, we need help going out there. Assisting education and outreach program, one thing I don't have mon, mentioned on there is water quality monitoring. And a big one, I think, and this is where we just recently did an organizational turnaround, look in the mirror type of thing, how can we better set up our job descriptions in each role to meet these goals? And then also, if we get another staff person, because one thing that I think that our watershed needs to do a little bit more of, and I think is, would, I need to clear some things up on my plate, is to get out and be a partner, get in front end of our stakeholders, municipalities, counties, to see where development is coming. I'd be meeting not only with the city managers more, but with public works, with community development. Our watershed wants to get involved in projects, especially when we can, you know, exceed compliance in areas where we can get more stormwater management and things like that. However, when things come in late, when we're not out in front, things come in at the end of the day, it's really hard to act on. It's hard as a developer, it's hard as a municipality, a city, public works, or some, you know, road project, where maybe we could have done some things, it's usually too late. So I think a lot of time needs to be spent, and that's also new FTE frees up some other areas so we can try to be more proactive in those areas. An important thing here is, to do a lot of these things, since we have three people, we rely on outside consultants. They get to be pretty pricey, I think a lot of these things, I mean, there's technical things that outside consultants we need for, but a lot of these things we can do internally, and again, I think it will reduce tax burden on our local taxpayers. Board meetings, well, we currently, as mentioned, we have monthly meetings, 12, 12 a year. That leaves us four special meetings, workshops, whatnot. Again, just like tonight, your annual meeting, whatever, it's basic business that the water, you know, that the board takes care of. But the workshops, you get educational things, you may get city staff to give a presentation, you may have a developer on a big development coming in that is a pre-permit thing, that gets in front of the board, and we can see where we can partner on areas. So limiting us to four of those, not that we're gonna use them all, but it gives us an opportunity. So, I guess, that is kinda what I have to present on what our request for the amendment is. Do you have any questions for me?
Um, I have one question, Randy. How, you mentioned that new addition is meeting space and some storage blow. What is the capacity of that meeting space?
Our, oh, if we have removable walls, we could, I think, put 45 people in there. Maybe 40. With, with, once you remove the glass walls, they're kinda sliding. As it is, there's probably a capacity of, for a board meeting of maybe 25.
And is that what you typically have for board meetings?
No, we typically have, unfortunately, 10 to 15 is all, usually we're dominated by staff.
Okay, and, so, I mean, I'm just thinking about Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District, they have had public meetings where they were so large that they had to have the meeting in this space, or other spaces around other communities that they cover. If you had a particular controversial issue, I'm assuming then with 45 seats, you would not be able to have them at that facility.
Ms. Mayor, if we have, usually if we have a public hearing on a project, like we did for the Edina Stream Bank Project, that was held at city offices of Edina, or at their chambers, we just recently had every year, well, this, not every year, two years running now, we have a state of the waters event, and we had over 70 people there. And for that reason, that was held at Eden Prairie Community Center, where we acknowledged all of our volunteers, talked about a specific topic this year, which was chloride application on parking lots and pollution to water resources. So, yes, if we have other places, and we have had to go other places to have large meetings.
Okay, so an increase of four meetings is not gonna be any kind of indication that it might be for large meetings? Those large meetings are not gonna be there?
No, no, we're offsite when it comes to large meetings.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I do.
Okay.
So, Randy, how many meetings do you currently hold there now? So I saw you had 16 board meetings, there are potentially 12 now, but you're looking to increase that to 16. And there was 16, was it CAC meetings, and was it 24 of another type?
There, on the restrictions right now, it's 16 evening board meetings, 16 evening CAC meetings.
Yep.
We realistically only have quarterly CAC meetings. We have eight neighborhood advisory committee meetings, and then we have two, if I could go back, it was two, well, the, we are technical advisor committee meetings, generally.
Two tack meetings per month?
Right, two per month.
So that's 24 total, so we're talking about potentially 32, 40, 66 meetings then per year, is kinda what you're looking at?
That's what it was in the, yeah, in the restriction.
So, I mean, it seems like a lot of, a lot of meetings for, for that space. What about special events, have you had any special events other than like the, you know, night to unite kind of a thing?
We have, we've held public open house meetings to present and hear back on our restoration project, on our parcel. And to that point as well, we have one coming up on January 17th, to give an update to our, those that want to show up and listen, our neighbors that want to come and listen to our restoration project.
In, in terms of the restoration project, that's probably one of the items that I've received the most feedback on, and I probably get more feedback than the other council members, just due to the proximity of, of my, my residents, being close to the, close to the watershed district offices. And there's a lot of people that are not very pleased, to say the least, about the, the amount of vegetation that was removed, and now the sightlines of the property. You know, before it was, you couldn't really see the office from the street very easily, whether you were on Gordon Drive, or whether you were on Gerard, but the way it is now, I mean, it is, I mean, you can see right through, obviously, very clearly, and there's a lot of people that feel like they were maybe betrayed, or, or not, or led astray on, you know, how that property was going to remain. And so, there's, there's quite a bit of, quite a bit of talk about that. So I guess, I mean, I would appreciate maybe you taking an opportunity to talk about, you know, what took place, and maybe what the plans are ultimately for the property. I think that would, that would be helpful to understand that.
I think this would be helpful to have this as an educational part of this presentation, but that's totally different than the question that we're being asked to deal with tonight. So I don't know how much you want to belabor it, and I know that there, isn't that what the next meeting that you're having is about?
Well, we will have another update, again, we've invited people to come and see what we're doing, and raise concerns on what we're doing, and, and ask questions.
Well, if you want to just take a few minutes to talk about that, be fine, but I'd like to keep the focus on.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, it's not part of what we're being asked, but I just, I know that a lot of people have raised a lot of concerns about that.
One thing I could add is on our website, we do have our ecological master plan that was developed in collaboration with Minnesota Land Trust, also with city staff. I mean, when we've done our buckthorn removal and selective tree removal, which included 60 ash trees this last time, we had collaboration with the city forester, the natural resource manager, and the environmental coordinator as a lot, as well as Minnesota Land Trust, because again, we can't do any willy-nilly things on our, on our site without Minnesota Land Trust also agreeing with our vision, or we could be found in, you know, on the wrong side of our easement and get interrupted, so whatever that trouble may be.
Personally, I was not aware of, of those changes being made and, and happening until they started happening, and so, it was kind of a shock to me to be, you know, in the neighborhood and all of a sudden notice all the trees being removed, so it was, it was quite a shock. I think to me and to a lot of people, but anyway, you're right, it isn't part of this, what we're being asked to evaluate tonight.
Uh, council member Wickston.
Did notification go out to the neighbors?
Okay, we always find that it will, projects are much more successful when neighborhood input is collected and considered.
And Councilmember Wickstrom, that is a hundred percent accurate. I, we will freely admit, the first time we went out, we gave, we really concentrated on the view shed of our area. That, so we had two parts, two phases. We really concentrated on the view shed, so we initially sent a letter out to those in the view shed stating that we're going to be out on this day knocking on your door, and we'd like to talk about our project and what we're going to do. Similarly, we've used social media, talking, then we had a bigger mailing that went out and had a meeting, saying, "Public meeting at Discovery Point this day, let's come and talk about it." We sent those letters out, also put it out on neighbor, next door. I'm not all the social media stuff, so, but, you know, all various different avenues. And then we, to be quite honest, we didn't concentrate on the view shed the second time. We just went out, top view neighborhood, boom, and went straight that way as opposed to just view shed initially and then trying to get a bigger audience.
Councilmember Case.
Thought Kathy had pressed her button too. No, she hadn't. I wasn't ready. I am ready. I don't know if it wouldn't be a good idea maybe to take the vote and then just take a few moments. I know we have people in the audience that did come concerned about the trees, and we're addressing it. And I had a couple of comments on that, but I really want to compartmentalize and keep that separate. So I'll leave that up to you. I'm, okay, I, we can all be contacted individually too. I, I do think there's another story that you have to tell, that I think you feel you told it and, and did a good faith effort to get the story out, but it maybe, it's still not told completely. And so maybe there's another way to continue to tell the story of what your vision is and what's going to happen, and the trees will be planted. But that, again, that, that's an issue over there. Regarding what's before us tonight is actually, I won't say small, but I think smaller than maybe the change in the perception based on trees tonight. And all we're being asked is to allow the Nine Mile Watershed District Group to hire, go from three to five employees if they wanted to. So that's, I'm assuming they each drive, so that's two extra cars a day, trips possibly, and then the additional meeting. So I'm completely in favor of that, and I just wanted to respond on one thing. I know that it's often, well, we hear it up on the council, the fear factor of, well, what could have gone in there? You know, it could have been a gas station, it couldn't have been, by the way, but I mean, that whole idea of what might have been there. And the reality, however, is that's really beautiful land, that the idea of putting maximum number of single-family homes in, not to mention what, I'm not even going there, what, you know, whether it could have been townhomes or something, but if it was just single-family homes, that's thirteen homes if it's at 2.5 units per acre, 5.2 acres. And, and I believe the thirteen, from all I can tell, I'm not a developer, probably could have been fit in there or density transfer or something. So thirteen houses, I mean, we have data that shows ten car trips a day on average, depending on the, the demographics of who moves in there. If you do that times three hundred and sixty-five days, there's forty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty trips, which is a real number. I mean, that, that, we all live in neighborhoods where, that's what happens, ten car trips a day at least out of homes. And so that forty-seven thousand truly does compare to, I, I just went with your, Brad, the sixty-six meetings, and I figured fifteen people, and I figured they each drive, so that's about a thousand trips a year. So one thousand trips versus forty-seven thousand car trips, there's a different impact there. So I'm not trying to convince neighbors who don't want what is there now, but I think for Barbara's vision, it's, it's, we're reaching that. You know, we're reaching this less invasive, less intensive use, more park-like for the neighbors. And, and I, from my personal chats with you, the vision for what it will look like and, and get a healthier forest there will come about. Nancy and I are the authors of the nineteen ninety-five Tree Preservation Ordinance. We love trees. We've fought for tree mass. I, I've evolved through time to realize that buckthorn tree mass is not the best tree mass, you know. And so I, I'm, I was up visiting, by the way, I tour, or whatever you showed me on Thursday, I believe it was. And while I was there, a neighbor came in who said, "I love this, what's happening. I love the use of this land." I thought that was interesting, just randomly, somebody walked in. I realized that's anecdotal, but. So I'm absolutely, I'm ready, depending on you all or a conversation, but to take the vote tonight on just allowing the developers' agreement to be tweaked. And then if, depending on what all you want, and if people in the audience would like a little bit more to be addressed on the tree piece, I think there's maybe a process issue or something we could address, possibly, or something. But, and that can be another day or another time too, so.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Anhorn?
Wait, you're not suggesting that we take the vote before we held the public hearing?
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Any other questions for Mr. Anhorn before we open the public hearing up?
That's what I thought. That sounded like you were suggesting.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Are there people in the audience that would like to address the council on this? And if so, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Yeah, what, I saw your hand first, and the man behind, gentleman behind him next, woman, this man, so that's four. I'm welcome to, you're welcome to have more speakers, and I would encourage you to make sure that if you have a specific issue that you want to have covered and none of these speakers brings it up, please do bring it up yourself. Okay.
Okay, hi. My name is Jim Griffith, and I live on Donlea Lane, which is right behind the Watershed District. I think many of us were concerned when Mrs. Kewer gave the gift to the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District, but we were given many assurances that there would be, I, I thought it was actually two full-time employees, not three. But either way, let's just not argue with that. It's three, it's three full-time employees. The number of events would be minimal. And what we're hearing is, is asking for two more. And I agree with Mr. Case that had it been developed into single-family homes, we would have had more traffic, but also Mrs. Kewer wouldn't have done that with her property. And I understand that Mr. Anhorn no longer wasn't the person that actually cut the deal, so to speak. But when the Nine Mile Watershed Creek District accepted, or accepted it, they could have also said, "No." They could have said, "We'll never be able to live with three people full-time here." And I appreciate everything that the Nine Mile Watershed Creek District does, and I don't want to argue the merits of, you know, what the two additional employees will do, but this is our neighborhood. This is not where we work. We have kids on the street every day. There will be an additional two thousand cars coming in and out of our neighborhoods. The deforestation, the property that was changed, that's in the rearview mirror. There's nothing we can do about that now. Do I agree that, you know, removing three acres of buckthorn is going to make a difference? Probably not. But I can appreciate the intent. I'm sure most of the projects are well-intentioned, but this is our neighborhood. This is not where we work. This is where we live. This is where we raise our families. And we are asking that the council deny the additional events and the addition of two more employees.
Thank you. Jim, could you, I just have a question on one of your statements. You said a thousand additional cars by adding two employees?
There will be two thousand, there'll be at least two thousand more trips going through our neighborhood, right? You got.
What's your math?
Well, using my math, I said at these events, you get forty people coming, right?
No, no, no.
Fifteen.
Fine. Let's forget that math. Say twenty people coming, twenty people coming out. That's eighty, that's forty, that's forty trips through our neighborhood, four times a year. That's a hundred and sixty, right? We got two full-time employees. They come in to work, they go out to lunch, they're, they go, they come to work and then they leave to go home. They're also going to take a lunch, so I got four, four trips for two employees. That's eight trips a day, times twenty days in a month, that's a hundred and sixty, times twelve, that's nineteen hundred and sixty, plus my, you know, a hundred and sixty from the additional four events, so.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next speaker.
My name's Adam Aksher. I live on Gerard Drive, approximately two blocks, I guess it was city blocks, from the Watershed District. So far, I've lived there for four years. It's been somewhat an inert member of our neighborhood. I have an eighteen-month-old son, so that's a place where we go and push a stroller around and give us something to do. So we have, we have had some traffic issues in our neighborhood, but it's never been related to them. And I've, I've communicated those to Mr. Aho, and he's been very helpful in participating with that. So I just wanted to voice support for having the Watershed District in our neighborhood. When I've had people come and visit, I just had a big dinner at my house for a bunch of, I work in Virginia, commute, so. Had a bunch of people here and showed them that property. I felt spoiled having a park across the street. That's something you really don't have in a lot of neighborhoods. And honestly, I wouldn't have came out tonight, but we kept receiving leaflets in our mailbox, which isn't legal to, you know, put unpost- unpostaged property in our mailbox. So I just wanted to come and say something about that too. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Natalie Ellerton. I live on Sleepy Hollow Lane, so I'm your neighbor. And it sounds like I need to stop having dinner parties too because of all the extra traffic. Who knew? I want to thank you for your comments, Mr. Case. Excellent point that, you know, there are, there are options for here for how we use land. And given the options, I, I think this is a remarkable use of the land. I want to commend the Watershed District for being so collaborative and communicative about plans to develop the property and, and maintain our, our shared natural resources. So I hope that you approve their request.
Thank you.
My name is David Ringsmuth. I live on Beehive Court. It's just, I don't know, maybe seven hundred feet from the Watershed District office. And I'm thankful to be able to approach you this evening on this topic. I think it's a clash of visions. If I was a developer and I said, "I'm coming into your neighborhood, and I've made an agreement with someone there who's passing on, and they're going to make a covenant with me, maybe two houses down from you, there's going to be a lot of traffic, eventually, maybe." When Barbara set this up, I mean, I, we would talk with her at times when she was in, you know, down at the corner block and having family gatherings, kind of like with the neighborhood. I don't believe her vision was for a big deal there. I think it was for a very limited setting, and it's a clash of visions. If someone was coming into your neighborhood and changing the nature of it. By the way, I, I like the, what they've done so far. I don't like how they pulled out all the trees. That's not the point. My, my point that I want to make is that it's a clash of visions. It's a single-family neighborhood. I would prefer, if it not grow, I'm okay with where it is. We take a lot of walks around there. Texting and driving is a problem. Someone's looking at their phone, some little kid's walking on the side of the road. I don't want someone to get hurt going to work texting and driving. You know, it's, and who knows what other issues might come up with it, but I just prefer to keep it as little clash as possible. I'm thankful that it's not bigger now. I wish that you would personalize it to yourself if someone came into your neighborhood and started being a little bit disruptive. See it from our eyes. We're living there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amber Cabotan, and I thought that after hearing all the other four, that I should speak up. I live right next door to the Nine Mile Creek property and the walking path for the city of Eden Prairie. I am, at this time, I am retired, and so is my husband. We do not see any traffic that's above normal. We do not hear any noise at night, if the lights, they have the lights on, I think, sometimes, and a little nervous, just because of protection or whatever. But anyway, I want to also comment about, Nine Mile Creek has sent out letters to the neighbors. I think it was on the seventeenth of November, they sent out a letter saying that they're having a meeting to discuss Phase Two. Out of all the letters they sent out and knocked on some doors, only, less than ten people showed up. Now, if you think that people were concerned, that's the place to show up and say something. Anyway, I think they are a great neighbor, and I'm very happy with the trees they've removed and the buckthorn that is gone. And I see a vision for the future that we all should embrace.
Thank you, Amber. Anybody else that wants to speak? Okay. See any?
Oh. I saw someone. The other thing too is, is that I've known Barbara for over thirty years. And I was the one that went out and got most of the signatures, along with Jennifer Prince. And I did talk to the residents, and most people were for it, except for maybe a handful. And Barbara's vision was to protect the earth. And I think if she were alive today, she would be happy that the deceased trees are coming down, that they're planting trees that are diverse, so therefore, if there's, if you plant all elms, you're going to have some trees left for our kids' kids. So I think that she would approve of this.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Should we do that first?
Sure. I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, any discussion? Councilmember Case.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I really appreciate those people that shared how much they knew Barbara. And just to let you know, I'm pretty sure all the council members up here were over there quite a bit, but I had what I would count as an honor and privilege of knowing her, what I would call very well, for years. And it's always difficult, you can't really, I don't think any of us have the right, I appreciate what everyone said, but I don't know that I have the right to speak in any way for what Barbara would or wouldn't think. I just know what she valued, and I know that she was incredibly smart, and, well, we all know that, her vocabulary at what, ninety was excelling any of us any time in my life. But I, I know that she would want the property to be, be based on her values forever available to the public. And I think she was astute enough to know that things evolve and things change. And I don't know what she would necessarily feel about the particular changes going on for the next hundred years, but the idea that her property was available to the public, I think she would be really happy to know. Even that we're having this public hearing talking about this open-spaced land, I, I think she would be pretty thrilled about that.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Yes.
My light isn't coming on, sorry.
Okay.
Anyway, no, I, I, you know, I appreciate that the Watershed District wants to preserve it and everything. And we, we knew Barbara quite well, and when her husband passed away, I would go over there and our kids would go over there. We would help Barbara with projects and things like that and try to help her transition through that. And so I got to know Barbara quite well, and, and I know her desire was to, to keep the property available to the public. And, and she really did want to do that. That was her vision. And I, I know she tried to actually gift the property to the city of Eden Prairie because she wanted it preserved. I think she ultimately ended up giving it to the watershed because there was really no other organization that wanted to take on the maintenance and the, and the cost and upkeep of the property. There was a lot of issues with the house in terms of trying to make it a public-use facility, et cetera. And so the Watershed District finally agreed that they would, they would take that project on. So I don't, I don't know that Barbara necessarily would have liked to see it grow into a, you know, a business office use and, and grow in number of employees there and things like that, because it is a, it is a very residential area. I mean, it is only neighborhoods. And I was not in favor of the project initially because I think it's really a spot, in my view, it was a spot zoning project, where we, we zoned a commercial, we changed the zoning from residential to commercial use in a pure neighborhood environment. And I don't know that we have any place else in the city of Eden Prairie where we've done that. And I don't really like doing that, not because it's in my neighborhood, just because I don't think that's a good, a good precedent to set. And, and so now we're looking at potentially increasing the number of employees there. We're increasing the number of meetings. We're increasing the intensity of use of a, of a purely residential property or area. And so from that perspective, I, I really do not like this, this, this idea. I think having it avail- I think having it available to the public, to be able to use it, to walk through it, is fabulous. It's a beautiful, beautiful property, and I think a lot of people like to walk there and walk around the watershed and, and use it from that perspective. I don't think we have to have more people, more meetings, more use there to, to keep it that way. And so from that perspective, I, I oppose this.
Councilmember Nelson.
I too knew Barbara for a long time. We had many long chats. And I know that she loved her home and wanted it to be used and the property around it. But in, we talked, too, about what she foresaw in the use of it. And she wanted it to be functional for the Watershed District. In a place like that, there's a limited number of employees ultimately that can be in there. And hopefully, the Watershed District won't grow a great deal in the number of employees they have because they have only so much ground to cover. I can see it going to a possible five. I can't see them coming back later and saying going to six or seven. I'd like them to be on notice now that five is pushing it. And I do acknowledge that evening meetings for some things are easier than daytime meetings. So some of your meetings are daytime. But that, too, shouldn't grow beyond that because your bigger meetings do go elsewhere, and the city does have facilities for you to come elsewhere, as do the other cities in your Watershed District. I can support this, but don't come back. You know, this is it. This is a neighborhood, you know, a home could easily have five members in their house, you know, two parents and three kids. You know, and some people in my neighborhood have a lot more relatives come to their house. You know, some people take up more space in a neighborhood than others, but the idea was, is to maintain this. And that needs to become part of your plan for meetings and where they're happening. So, like I said, this is it for me. And, but I know that you do need to be functional in what you do. And I know Barbara was quite excited about the possibility of people in that area implementing good things throughout a whole watershed area, which she very definitely believed in. And it was something she felt that she and her husband would want for the use for their beautiful home.
Councilmember Wixstrom.
Right. I also think it's a reasonable request. I think the Watershed District is conscientious with their inclusion of the neighbors. Clearly, there's not agreement in the room with, between neighbors about, about this request. But I think that it's actually, I, I think it will help the success of, of the Watershed District. So I'm going to support it, and I'm willing to make the motion.
Okay. Could I just make a couple comments?
Oh, sure.
I agree with Councilmember Aho that it's, I don't know what the right word is. It's always awkward to go from residential zoning to office. And it's not something that we do lightly. We spend a lot of time thinking about it because it's not the typical way that things go with land development. But this was kind of an exception. I think we made the exception because of what we knew Barbara Carver's wishes were for this property, what the use was and the intensity of use, and then also the fact that it's a very residential-looking piece of property still. I think we've all talked about how if this had developed like other comparable residential land would have developed, there could have been 13, 14 homes here. That's similar to what kind of is on my street catchment area, which probably means that there are well over 200 trips a day generated by the people on my street area. We're talking about adding two employees that are going to add eight trips a day, maybe. To me, that's not a huge increase. We're talking about an increase of 5% in meetings. To me, that's still keeping with character of what the intent was for this property. And, gosh, I just feel like there's not, there aren't too many things more important than water to our health and to our safety, and here in Minnesota, to our economy. And, boy, personally, I want the Watersheds to be able to act in the manner that they're supposed to act and function to the utmost degree, and to be able to do that cost efficiently by not having consultants. If it means adding two employees so they can really do their job, I'm all for it. And I don't think that there's going to be a huge impact on the perceived amount of activity at that site. So I'm in favor of this, too.
Well, I move to approve the amendment to the Declaration of Covenants, Conditions, and Restrictions for the Nine Mile Watershed District.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion, oh, opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes, four to one. Mr. Case, you wanted to discuss something about the process for the...
Oh, only, not necessarily now, but only do we want to have some mechanism in terms of welcoming people back? Do we want to have them email and call us? Do we, do we want to set up, maybe facilitate, a, a Part II meeting? I know that Randy, you did well in, in, I don't know how to word exactly, but it seems like the process that attempted to get, you know, community involvement was good, but we all know that we're busy, and so it's up to government to communicate one time and two times and three times and again and again, you know. And so if we could possibly facilitate something, I guess I want to leave it up to the, the people in this room and, and others in the neighborhood, if, if they feel that they would like additional input, that or go visit Randy, like I did, and let him sit down, if you haven't already, and, and share the vision. Go ahead.
Can you, when you cut to the microphone so everybody can hear?
And at home can hear it as well.
Ms. Mayor and councilmembers, I, this I printed off on our copy at, at the office, but we have some postcards that will, are getting printed right now, and they should go in the mail either today or tomorrow. That will be advertised at Open House at 6:00 on January 17th, where our landscape architect will give a short presentation. We'll talk about where we're at, what's up, how many more trees are we planting, when it may be, how we'll have community involvement on screening, where should things go? Does this look good to you?
That addresses it for now. And I guess, reach out to us if you feel that you want more input, more information, more education. We can maybe help facilitate that.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Payment of Claims is next. There's a motion for approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Any items to question? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wixstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Tara Lukens?
Aye. The next item is appointments. These are kind of bookkeeping things, administrative-type things that we take care of every year. And they're basically things like designating our city newspaper, our newspaper for city notices, which councilmembers are going to be on what commissions and task forces. So why don't we start first with the city newspaper? Somebody want to make the motion?
Do I just go down the row?
Sure.
I'll, I'll start with that one, then. So I would move to adopt the resolution designating the Eden Prairie News as the official city newspaper for the year 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Sherry?
Okay. I move to adopt a resolution designating the official meeting dates, time, and place for the City of Eden Prairie Council in 2018, and appointing Councilmember Ron Case the acting mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Ron, do you want to do the next one?
Sure. I would move to adopt the resolution appointing city councilmembers to serve as commissioners for the Eden Prairie Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and appointing Nancy Tara Lukens as chair, Rick Getcho as executive director, and, I'm not reading here, council, councilmember Kathy Nelson as secretary for calendar year 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Move to adopt the resolution designating...
Robert Ellis.
Robert Ellis as the director, and Ron Case as the alternate director to the suburban rate authority.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Brad, do you want to do the next?
Move to approve the appointment of the mayor as delegate and councilmembers as alternates to the National League of Cities.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Move to approve appointment of the mayor to the municipal legislative commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item.
Yes, I would move to approve the appointment of Kathy Nelson to the Southwest Cable Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Move to approve the appointment of Ron Case to the Eden Prairie Community Foundation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Uh, do you want to appoint, I'll, Sherry, take the next one.
Yeah, I was going to say.
I move to approve appointment of Brad Aho to the I-494 Corridor Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Brad, do you want to do?
Yep. Move to approve the appointment of Sherry Butcher-Wixstrom to the City and School Facilities Use Task Force.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes.
So help me with Jacob's last name.
Bushian?
Bushian? I move to appoint Jacob Bushian as Assistant Weed Inspector, because I believe our mayor is the weed inspector's, I know, right, or, for the city of Eden Prairie.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes.
I don't think he should take it away from you. It's a pretty important job.
Motion move to adopt the resolution appointing Finance Manager Sue Kachiver and Councilmember Ron Case to the Fire Relief Association.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Yeah, Sherry, do you want to do the next one?
Yeah, I appoint...
Or you move to?
I appoint Nancy Tara...
Nope.
Okay.
Who is that?
Yep.
Okay. I appoint Brad Aho to the Southwest Metro Transit Board as the Eden Prairie Citizen Representative.
Well, no, no, I'm not the citizen representative.
Well...
I'm...
Council representative.
I'm the council representative.
Oh, we got the wrong language. Okay, I appoint Brad Aho to the Southwest Metro Transit Board as the Eden Prairie City Council Representative for a three-year term to end December 31st, 2020.
Okay, and before this is seconded, I'd like to add on to that, that I have decided that now is a really good time for me to roll off of this commission. I serve as the citizen representative currently, if it was true or mixed. I currently serve as a citizen representative, and I've been on Southwest Transit since 1994, possibly the very tail end of 1993. So I've been on it a long time, and I'm kind of feeling like it's time to roll off. We recently came to a pretty monumental agreement with the LRT Project Office, which required a lot of negotiation and a lot of meetings. And it just seems like this would be a good time. We've completed that negotiation. Now it'd be a good time to move off. So I would like to resign, and I would like to add to this motion, the appointment of Ron Case as taking my place as the citizen representative. Mr. Case has been on the commission for at least one term, maybe two, over the past...
Seven years or something.
Yeah, so I, I think that he can hit the ground running and carry the message of LRT and the council.
Is that effective?
Effective, January 12th.
That's the meeting that you'll resign at?
January 11th is the meeting I will resign at. Okay, you can come to that meeting. Okay. All right. So I would like to add that on to the...
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Brad, next, your turn.
I would have a motion to appoint the Board of Appeal and Equalization, Lyndon Moquist, Annette O'Connor, Todd L. Walker, Nate Thompson, and Kristin Riel for the period of March 1st, 2018 through May 31st, 2018, or until the Board of Appeal and Equalization completes its work.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And for the students in the audience, the Board of Appeal and
Equalization hears arguments that citizens might have with their taxes and their assessments for their homes. Okay, report of councilmembers. Councilmember Ron Case, you had something you wanted to discuss.
I did. Just taking notes here. Many people that have lived in Eden Prairie for at least 15 years know that back around the turn of the millennium, so 1999, 2000, 2001, Eden Prairie city government was involved in intense negotiations with the Metropolitan Airport Commission, even to the extent of having a law, well, we never, Rick, help me, I don't know that we actually filed a lawsuit, but we hired an attorney. We were prepared to do, to go to court to battle. At the time, fighting, what I believe, for the people of Eden Prairie, against the airport expanding into an airport that would have had, I think, some negative, serious consequences on, depending on how you arguably define it, but the vast majority of people living in Eden Prairie, especially those around the airport. So out of that process came in 2002, a final agreement that allowed the airport to expand to 5,000 feet, their longest runway, in exchange for some contractual agreements that we believed, and still hold to this, that it's rock-solid court document, that limits the airport's ability to fly heavier planes than 60,000 pounds, limits the airport's ability to increase pavement depth, I believe to Mr. Russell, 17 inches or something, but whatever it is, it's, it's limited. Pavement depth, obviously, is directly correlated to the heavier, larger planes that can land at Flying Cloud. The runway itself, the 5,000 feet. And then the fourth item that we took away for the people of Eden Prairie was a complete limit on nighttime run-ups. Those are, at the time, some of the maintenance organizations up at Flying Cloud had 24/7, three shifts of main maintenance crews that would maintain aircraft. And when a plane is being tested, it's taken out on the runway, and they run up the engine to full speed. It's, it's not what a plane will do on normal takeoff, which runs it up for, I don't know, Brad, do you know, 10 seconds or 20, but this is where they'll run it up for five minutes, testing it. At 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, it was impacting probably neighbors for a mile and a half around. So that was abolished from 10:00 AM to 6:00 AM in the morning.
10:00 PM.
10:00 PM.
10:00 PM.
What did I say? Oh, 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM in the morning. Did I get it right? Yep. You cannot do nighttime run-ups. So what's happening now is that, of course, technology's changed. There are fixed base operators, FBOs, up at the airport, that are getting requests from air, jet owners, new jets, private corporate jets, to bring in heavier jet corporate aircraft. They're believing that requests will be coming possibly this year, asking for that weight limit to be lifted. But in, in kind of a, no pun intended, a run-up to that whole process, because of the Super Bowl, and the 500 to 600 corporate jets that will be coming into the Twin Cities area over the five days around the Super Bowl, they're looking to bring in these heavier corporate jets at Anoka, Holman Field, MSP, and Flying Cloud was the request. So at the time, they wanted to meet with Rick Getcho and Rick Russell and the mayor. And I was invited into that because I was part of the negotiating team, along with the mayor at the time, Gene Harris, from 90, I don't remember when we started, 98 maybe or something, up to 2002. And of course, Gene has passed on, so I'm, I'm the only councilmember still around that was part of that original negotiating team. So I was pulled into that. Nancy and I were not speaking for all of you. We can't do that. We even recommended that if they had concerns, they bring a request back to all of us, if that, if that was what they so intended. But Nancy and I, in that meeting, shared our personal opinion and the fact that Nancy is mayor. You've talked, probably, not breaking open meeting law, but over the years with everyone up on this council, or at least they've had the chance to talk during council meetings. So we had a sense of what all of you might feel on that, but we invited them to come and ask you if that was the concern they wanted to have answered. At any rate, we communicated that we would not want to raise the plane limit now. And I communicated personally, ever, that we had this rock-solid agreement that if we were to go back to the people of Eden Prairie and say... by the way, they want the weight limit to increase, they're going to fly in larger planes, it's going to be more planes, it's going to be louder, it's going to have greater impacts, and we got nothing for you out of it. That wasn't acceptable. So where it stands right now, and you maybe have read about it in the paper, is that Metropolitan Airport Commission got the clear message, no for around the Super Bowl and likely no going ongoing. But we did have a very respectful meeting and agreed to meet again, at least to have that conversation and keep that open communication going with the Metropolitan Airport Commission. But they heard very clearly from the mayor and from me that the two of us at least, and they can come back and ask each of you, would not be so inclined to ever raise that weight limit. So I just want to kind of give an update and a report out. I don't know, Mayor, you want to add anything to that?
The only thing I wanted to add to that is while we're saying we don't want to lift the weight limit for that event, there will be a lot of planes. I think, did they say 200 planes will be parked at Flying Cloud Airport?
And they will likely close down a runway to park them. So I guess we want to say to everyone here in the room tonight, but also people listening, and hopefully newspapers pick it up, there will be, within our current 60,000-pound weight limit, there will be up to 200 corporate jets flying in for the five-day period around the Super Bowl. And they believe at certain times, when they're flying out on, I don't know if they'll get out Sunday night or Monday morning, I'm guessing every two, three to four minutes, a corporate jet will be taking off. So just know that, be prepared for that.
Keep your windows shut.
For me, it's a test case for, we don't, I mean, I'll speak personally here, just for me. And I'll put a caveat on there. I live right next to the airport, but I live not under a runway. So when I speak, or when any of us speak for anything positive about Eden Prairie, it may benefit us, but we're speaking on behalf of 65,000 people. But I feel directly speaking on behalf of 20,000 or 30,000 that will be greatly impacted. But to me, what we will be experiencing over those five days might be a test case run for what could happen, not to be this worst-case scenario kind of guy. But if hundreds of corporate jets end up getting parked up there regularly and this becomes a much more major jet port in the reliever system, I think it will have a gravely negative impact on the quality of life for Eden Prairie. So we do get a sense on what that might feel like over the five days around the Super Bowl. And that'll be interesting just to see. But we just want to let everyone know that...
It's coming.
It's coming. At least for those five days. We're going to do all we can, or I'm going to do all we can, and I'm sure others up here as well, to make sure that doesn't come permanently into Eden Prairie.
Road traffic may be an issue as well.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. We have reports of city manager, board and commission.
Mayor, thank you. Yes, the last report in action before we adjourn is that we're coming up on our board and commission recruitment process. And it's a big deal in Eden Prairie because we have six very active boards and commissions that recommend policies and do quite a bit of education, a lot of outreach, a lot of feedback that's provided to the city council and the city staff in the case of two of the commissions actually, public hearings and passing on recommendations to the city council. And annually, we have openings. Maybe there might be on some commissions only one or two openings on a nine-member commission, or in some cases, maybe three openings on a five-member commission. But that process of taking applications begins here within the next week. So the city, through social media, through the city website, we're going to be promoting the openings that are occurring on our commissions, encouraging people to apply. We will have some that may want to come back for a second term who are already on the commission. But we may have some that we have openings where there'll be external applicants that we're looking for. So the process opens next week and continues into early February. And then in mid-February, the deadline for applications will occur. And then the city council will actually spend an entire evening, it's actually one of the longest meetings of the year for the city council, for interviewing each and every single applicant to be on a board and commission. We need to talk about the date for that because there might be a conflict. So in the motion, that may change. And then the council will take action in March at one of your March meetings, preferably the first meeting, to appoint board and commission members. They will receive an orientation in late March and begin their term in April. So this goes out there to anybody that has an interest in being involved in their community. Maybe you have volunteered, maybe you've been active through any city programs that we have. Maybe you've spoken at city council meetings, you've emailed, you've written letters. But this is actually your opportunity to serve on a board or body. So this is, and students. So that's a separate program. We have that program as well, and that'll be in the fall. So we'll do a student program as well. So we have student commissioners.
Mr. Getchow, can you talk about where they can find the application?
Yeah, so they'll be able to find the application on the city website, edenprairie.org. So that's, we're going to have a big push for that within the next week.
And there will be information on the website too about what the commissions do, how frequently they meet. And don't be put off by the idea of an interview. It's not a grueling interview. These are group interviews. They're not intimidating. And it's a really interesting job to be on a commission or a task force. You not only get to meet people, but you get to have the fun of having input into things that happen in the community, things that are built in the community, the way services are delivered in the community. And that can be really rewarding. So I'd encourage you to apply. Is there a motion?
I would move to approve the attached timeline for recruitment of board and commission candidates and set February 22nd, 2018, possibly.
Oh, but it is the 21st still.
Right. So then that was the point I was bringing up, that the 22nd might not work for all five of you. But I think, it's a Thursday. But the 21st is a Wednesday. If you could make the motion, it'd be the 21st.
February 21st, 2018 is the date for commission interviews.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Anything else to bring forth before the council tonight? None, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.